We will call to order the regular city council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Empire, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Can we begin with roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers. Dederman.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Oberon.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kerns.
Here.
Councilmember Kerns.
Thank your honor, I approve the minutes of the regular city council committee of the the regular city council and committee of the whole meetings of April 22, 2025, and they be approved and published on May 6, 2025.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
All right. This item here, we have a proclamation declaring May 2025 as ALS Awareness Month. Whereas amniotrophic lateral sclerosis, also commonly known as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive fatal neurodegenerative disease in which a person's brain loss, brain loses connection with their muscles, slowly reducing a person's ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually breathe. And whereas thousands of new amniotrophic lateral sclerosis cases are reported every year and estimates show that every 90 minutes someone is diagnosed with ALS and someone passes away from ALS. And whereas, on average, patients diagnosed with ALS survive only two to five years from the time of diagnosis. And whereas, the exact causes of ALS are unknown and there is no known cure for ALS. And whereas, people who have served in the military are more likely to develop ALS and die from the disease than those with no history of military service. And whereas, securing access to new therapies, durable medical equipment, and communication technologies is of vital importance to people living with ALS. And whereas, clinical trials play a pivotal role in evaluating new treatments, enhancing quality of life, and fostering assistive technologies for those living with ALS. And whereas, the ALS Association is the largest philanthropic funder of ALS research globally and has committed more than $154 million to support more than 550 projects across the United States and 18 other countries. And whereas, the ALS Association is committed to accelerating the pace of discovery fueled by the hope that one day ALS will be a livable disease for everyone, everywhere, until a cure can be found. And whereas, Amniotrophic Lateral Sclerosis Awareness Month provides an opportunity to increase public awareness of the dire circumstances of people living with ALS, acknowledge the terrible impact this disease has on those individuals and their families, and support research to eradicate this disease. Now therefore, I Scott Madison, Mayor of the City of Clinton, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as ALS Awareness Month. I call upon all Americans to join in supporting ALS research, advocating for increased funding and standing in solidarity with those affected by this relentless disease. And witness whereof, I hereinto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Clinton to be affixed this 13th day of May 2025. All right. We will, yep, we will move on. Chief?
All right. Mayor of City Council, Kevin Durian, Police Chief. Good evening. First, I would like to extend my sincere thanks to the City Council for their mission or continued support of our mission and the Clinton Police Department. Your partnership makes our mission possible. We are here tonight to recognize one of our finest, Officer Chelsea Mayer. We would like to do this every year going forward, but this is the first one, and it's for last year, 2024. As a Chelsea Mayer is the Officer, 2024 Officer of the Year. So Officer Mayer, would you come up and be roasted, please? Officer Mayer was honored for her outstanding dedication, compassion, and unwavering service to our community. In one of the year's most notable acts of service, Officer Mayer went above and beyond the call of duty to assist a retired U.S. Armed Services veteran in crisis. Her swift and empathetic response provided critical support and reflected her deep respect for those who have served our country. She also exhibited exceptional bravery and care during a residential fire, where she performed CPR on two pets rescued from a burning home. Her quick thinking and lifesaving efforts underscored her devotion to protecting lives, both human and animal. Beyond her heroic actions, Officer Mayer was also recognized for her strong camaraderie with our fellow officers. She is a respected team player known for her integrity, leadership, and willingness to support her colleagues both on and off duty. Her positive spirit and professionalism uplift those around her, making her a valued and admired member of our department. Through her exemplary service and commitment to the highest standards of law enforcement, Officer Chelsea Mayer has earned the profound gratitude of the Clinton community and the respect of her peers. So, Mr. Mayer, if you would present her with her plaque, and please join me in congratulating Officer Mayer on being named Clinton Police Officer of the Year.
Nice job, Chelsea. Very nice. Congratulations, Chelsea.
Congrats, congrats. Okay, going to public hearings. We'll convene a public hearing concerning approving and authorizing an amendment to the amended and restated agreement for private development with Riverstone Development LLC. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
We have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Hearing none. We will close the public hearing. Councilmember Musman?
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving and authorizing amendment to the amended and restated agreement for private development with Riverstone Development LLC and providing for publication of notice thereof. I move that to be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
We'll convene a public hearing concerning accepting bids and awarding contract for Project A-2025, Second Avenue South Sewer Separation, Bluff Boulevard to South Fourth Street. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
We have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Hearing none. We will close the public hearing. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for Second Avenue South Sewer Separation, Bluff Boulevard to South Fourth Street, Project A-2025. I move that to be accepted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Okay, moving to audience comment section. I do have several yellow cards here. I have some that are on the agenda, some that aren't. If your topic is not on the agenda, it is a three-minute time limit because that item isn't, isn't there on the agenda. For the folks that filled one out that are on the agenda, you have the option that you can come up and speak now. Otherwise, we can wait till that item comes up. The first card I have is Janet Turpin.
Good evening, everyone. Janet Turpin, 1001 North Third Street, here in Clinton. I just really wanted to thank every one of you for putting together a wonderful listening post. It was very well put together, I thought. I've heard nothing but compliments from many citizens who really enjoyed the ability to be able to speak, whether they opposed or in support of, whichever side they fell on, they were able to have that type of respectful conversation in one spot and feel heard by council members. And I feel it's something that should be utilized moving forward and for future decisions as well that are big. And that's pretty much all I had, was just a compliment that I feel that that's something that we should utilize more often, and it went very well. And just wanted to thank everyone for putting it together.
Thanks, Janet. Mike Ryland?
Good evening, folks. This is my first time doing this. I'm a little, you know, I live on 21st Place, and I'm sure as everybody's aware, a few years ago when Clinton redesigned the streets, when they did the curb and gutters, they, no parking on one side of the street. Well, I have some people right across the street from me. They have four vehicles, two of only which are driven daily. The other two, I call trash trucks. They just load their garbage in them. They don't move them, you know. I get the thing with chalking the tires, you know, but if they only got to move that vehicle six inches to be legal, I mean, what's the point? I mean, really, it's, it's a waste of time. These vehicles are unsafe. They leak gasoline, antifreeze, tranny fluid, and, you know, of course, they're pointing downhill. And to me, that would be a safety concern. But I don't know what the city has as far as how many vehicles a, a family could have. You know, there's only two legitimate drivers that live there. They don't need all these vehicles. I mean, I'm a disabled vet. I've had to call an ambulance twice to my house, and a fire engine or truck wouldn't be able to park there. So, maybe council members need to come up with some kind of resolution or something to make this legal, to get rid of. I'm just trying to clean up my neighborhood, you know. These trucks, the Titanic looks better. And, I mean, although they have legal plates and tags on them, but they don't drive them. One's got to be started with a jump pack every day. So, I don't know.
Mike, can we make a complaint to staff?
You can't discuss.
Well, we're not. I'm just asking if you can make a complaint.
You can't.
I just.
You can't.
The, the reason there's a timeline on there is it's not on the agenda, so we can't have discussion. It's not a time for discussion. No.
I think we need to get your contact information.
We have it right here. I'm getting there.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead. Still have more time if you'd like.
That, that's about all I have. I mean, I didn't think the parking, you know, when they get rid of one whole side of the street, most of those houses have driveways, you know, and most of them use them. But on any given day, them four vehicles right in front of my house, you know, and I'm thinking to myself, I'm a taxpayer. That's my property. I paid for that cement. You know, I got to mow that grass. They don't have to do nothing, you know. And it, I don't know, I think something really needs to be done. Cleaned up the neighborhood. Time to take trash out, as they say, you know. And that's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Okay. I know Matt was taking notes. If we could pass this down and have him put his, like, an email or a phone number or something, and staff will work with you and see what, what we can do on a resolution, okay?
I think someone's already worked with them, too.
Perfect.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. David Mueller? I know your, your item's on the agenda. Do you want to wait till that item comes up?
Oh, I'll wait.
Okay. John Nichols?
I'll also wait.
Wait, okay. Melody Carr and Brian Bell?
Good evening, your honor. My name's Melody Carr. I've been a resident of Clinton for 14 years. This is my husband, Brian Bell. And we are here on behalf of a population of individuals who can't be here today, nor ever. And that involves the groundhogs and the woodchucks, or the whistle pigs, if you want to call them, on the west side of ADM Parkway, the Lincoln Parkway area. We just learned a few days ago that the Public Works Department is trapping them and euthanizing them. We've been watching these, this, this wildlife population for 14 years now and keeping track of them and getting a lot of joy out of them. And I know that a number of you folks probably do the same. We're asking that, and I know this isn't a forum for back and forth discussion, but we're looking to have them rather than euthanized, but to have them relocated as they have been previously. Our understanding is that they are going to be euthanized, and that they have been euthanized in the last few days. I would like to see them relocated, and I don't see that that's an issue. I don't see, we have so many wildlife refuges that I don't see why we can't have them relocated to certain spots. My understanding, too, on, on the flip side of this, I understand from your mission statement here that you want to create opportunities for economic growth and tourism. What better way to have tourism than to have a little area, and that's a big area, that those, that median where they all survive and live, that's a big area that you could make a city wildlife refuge if you really wanted to and attract people as the only area that in the state, the only town in the state that is a groundhog town, like a prairie dog town. You could do that, if you wanted. And I know, in talking with Brian Lemke, the Public Works Director who's responsible for the euthanizations and the decision thereof, I understand that they cause electric utility box damage, but you can mitigate for that. There's public health concerns, but honestly, I've never seen anybody out there, that area is completely devoid of development right now, and even though they use some of it for parking, you could easily have parking for the tall boys and tailgates area and not harm the groundhogs.
Got 20 seconds left. Okay.
Thank you. Anyways, I consulted with Iowa IDNR. You folks have met the criteria. However, I'm just asking that they at least be given, not be euthanized and be given life.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Got some notes there. Okay, all right. Alan Eberly? You want to wait?
I think I'll wait.
Okay, thank you. And then Celeste Robbins?
I don't have a copy of the agenda, so I don't have.
It's on the agenda, so do you want to wait for that topic to come up, or, yes? Okay. That's all the yellow cards I have. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the council on a topic that's not on the agenda? Okay, no one online, doesn't look like. Last chance. Must be all here for the same thing. All right. Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have to present on attachment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on consent agenda? Let's see, 8AH. 8AI. I think that's it. Yep.
It said AI.
AI, AH. Anything else from the consent agenda? Okay, can we have a roll call on the balance of the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yeah.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Seeley?
Your honor, I make a motion. We receive a proven place on file claims listings one, two, and three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the claims listings? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers. Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kerns?
Thank your honor. I have a motion to approve the mayor's recommendation to boards and commissions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can you read the one for us, please?
I can. We have a, an appointment of Maria Savacca, a four-year term for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. And since there is someone in the room that was just asking about any vacancies, I'm going to mention that we have a vacancy in the Neighborhood Improvement Committee and also the Vehicle for Hire Board.
Thank you. Any discussion on this appointment? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemmers?
Your honor, I have a resolution fixing date for a meeting, a meeting on the authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of not to exceed 4.4 million, 48,000 taxable sewer revenue capital loan notes of the City of Clinton, State of Iowa, and providing for the publication of notice thereof. I move the resolution to be adopted as read.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Oberon?
Thank your honor. I have a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2024, 2025 city operating budget. Will this resolution be adopted as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Can.
Councilmember Kerns?
Can we ask Anita to come up and just give a word?
Kind of run over on this?
I know she'd love to.
Good evening, mayor and council. So, every year, we propose, I propose an amendment to the operating, the current operating budget if there's expenses that look like they're going to exceed what we budgeted. So, currently in fiscal year 25, we set the budget for fiscal year 25, and, well, we just set the budget for FY '26, so it's always like 18, 18 months ago, we set the budget. So, there's a couple of categories. The revenues, I'm proposing an increase of $6.2 million. That includes some intergovernmental, mostly intergovernmental revenues for some grant funds, like our HUD grant. We didn't budget anything in that category. When we set the budget, I usually wait till the amendment so we know what revenue has come in, what expenses have gone out. There was a RISE grant for the rail park. There was some Iowa Department of Transportation grants for the payment management program. $50,000 in licenses and permits, that comes from the Engineering Services Fund. $68,880 from the MTA for charges for services. And then the miscellaneous category of $2.3, $2,377,000, which was reimbursements from Atlas for work that was done out there in the rail park. So, that's an increase in revenues of $6.2 million. And then we have increases in expenses of, for the public safety category of $1.2 million. I gave, Matt's got it on the screen, I gave a summary to all the council members today. That's not all general fund money. There are some departmental special revenue funds, like the fire training ground is an example for the fire department. They received those rail cars out there. They're stacking them on top of each other. They're using them for fire training. Even though the rail cars and money was donated by Lyondell, we still have expenses associated for that, with that, that we didn't budget for. So, we need to amend the budget to include those. Public works, that's mostly all road use tax items. Health and social services, that's the HUD grant expenditures. And I'll just stop right here. Keeping in mind when we do this, that if we have an expenditure, if we have an expenditure of $1 that we didn't budget for, but we got a dollar in revenue to cover it, we still have to amend the budget. It doesn't net each other out. So, that's what, even though the revenues don't match the expenses, that's what has happened with most of the cases here. Culture and Recreation, $68,000 for some library special revenue funds. The Hometown Heroes Banner Fund, we spent some money out of that. We actually liquidated that account. We gave it to the Downtown Clinton Alliance to manage, but we have an expense to send that money to them, so we have to account for it here. And then in the grounds and facilities budget, there was some increase in some wages and benefits and services and commodities. Most of the services and commodities were charges for water. Community and Economic Development, the Building and Safety Division had some increases in some salaries. Community Development, increases in wages and benefits. The Grow Clinton subsidy was $5,000 more than what I budgeted for. I budgeted 60, it was 65, so I'm amending that here. And then the TIF LMI Fund for Roof Program expenditures and some economic development grants. And I'll stop right here also and say, these are things that you guys have approved on claims listings. I just need to encapsulate it in a budget amendment. General Government, so for the IT Department and the Human Resources Department, we had talked during FY '25 budget process that we had excess fund, we, we had revenues in excess of expenses, and you guys had approved hiring an HR director and an IT supervisor, which we did. I did not account for those in FY '25 budget because I wasn't sure when that would occur, so I'm accounting for that here. The City Planning Activity, $13,600, that's mostly legal fees. City Clerk Activities, that's mostly publications, additional costs for publications, like in the Clinton Herald. Government Building Activities, that's, that's that activity of the general fund where we have a person that supports the various buildings, does work, but there was, were some servicing commodities line items that were more than budgeted. Our self-insured health insurance program expenditures were a little bit higher. And then special revenue fees of the tax levies for FICA, IFRS, municipal police and fire retirement, and tort liability were higher than what had been budgeted for. The capital projects, the biggest line item in there that we didn't know at the time that we set the budget was the repayment for the Rail Park 28E agreement. So, that's $2.1 million. 3.6 is just, you know, when we, when I do the budget for every year, I take what we're bonding for and what we have projected for expenses, and that's what I budget for. But we have, but, we have those bond funds that we're supposed to spend in three years, so we have fund balance. And then we might do the project in FY '25 that was bonded for in FY '24. So, there's fund balance to cover that, but it's just the expenditures didn't happen in the year. And even though I budgeted for in FY '24, if they weren't spending FY '24, I have to budget for them again in FY '25. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then, let's see, the Brownfields Project is another line item. There are $262,500 that I'm projecting will be spent by the end of the fiscal year, and that's taking down the YMCA. We did not have that budgeted when, we did not know that that was happening when we set the FY '25 budget. And then lastly, is the business-type enterprises, and most of that's coming from the sewer fund. It's overtime costs, health insurance, some services and commodities. A good example of that is the landfill fees that we've been, that we've been having to pay from carrying the sludge that had used, used to be taken by farmers, and our landfill fees are up significantly because of that. And then they had a capital operating equipment purchase, which is that camera system. It's not a truck, it's not a trailer. That was additional. Any questions?
The, the health insurance change stuff, is that mainly because of claims?
Yeah.
That we don't foresee coming?
Correct.
Yeah. And then, my other question was the CPD wages and benefits. That seems like a pretty large number to change in a year.
You know, when we do the budget, we figure in whatever the contractual adjustment is, and then try our best to determine who's making moves. And then if we have new people come on, you know, estimating what health insurance plan they're going to take, and it's.
Okay.
Crystal ball work.
That makes sense. Any other questions, discussion?
Thanks, Anita.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Dederman?
Thank your honor. A resolution endorsing a community project funding grant application for the North River Drive Project and authorizing matching funds. A move that to be adopted as presented.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll open this for discussion. Any councilmembers that have a desire to speak first, or should I go through the cards that I have first?
Go through that first.
Cards, okay. David Mueller. And this, there's not technically a time limit on the comments here, but I know we have a lot of folks in here, probably that, a lot of people that want to speak. So we'll try to keep it brief and concise as we can so we can get through everyone, okay?
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. My name is Dave Mueller. And I'm here just to voice some opinions about this road project. There's some things that I don't understand about it. And we're talking about an access road from approximately 21st Avenue North and Harding and Grant Street to run along either side of the sawmill. That's the access point right now for emergency response to the dike. That gravel road that runs alongside of it, if that access road is what's going to be used to connect Main Avenue to 9th Avenue North, you'll never see the river. The dike is up here, the road is down here. So I don't understand that part of it. And as far as Joyce's Island, I really don't want to see anything put out there on Joyce's Island. Because it's, my interpretation of that now is that that is, because of the Discovery Trail that goes through there, that is parkland. That's city-owned parkland. And to put a development like a road with curb gutter out there, that's a big development. And that should be something for the citizenry of Clinton to decide. So yes, I am opposed to any funding of a street going through Joyce's Island. And would I rather see eagles or cars? Eagles or cars? Eagles all day. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, would you like to answer his first question? About the road? No?
Just for, for reference sake, the access road you're talking about is not where the road would be. It's proposed to be built on top of the levee like the, like it is down on the, on the south end there currently.
At the information release, that wasn't ever mentioned.
Oh, that's...
What was mentioned was the access.
Okay. To my knowledge, that's the way the plan is, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure we answer your question, since you had that. Okay?
All right.
John Nichols?
How you doing? John Nichols, 1315 23rd Avenue North. I'd like to start out with a little background from me. I have traveled all over the country, lived all over the country, worked all over the country. And when it was time for me to start my family, I came back to Clinton because this is where my roots are. My wife and I, who is not here, she's on her way, currently pay taxes on seven parcels within two blocks of Main Avenue. Houses, commercial buildings, et cetera, et cetera. I am for the development, or really any development, to happen up there except for condos, which nobody wants to see. The bike path is currently in poor shape. I used to travel it all the time as a child, going from the north end to the Clinton Pool, back and forth, when I used to work down at Gateway Garden Center on 5th Avenue South. It's not the same bike path from my childhood. I would not send my girls down there, not a chance. Been down there recently. There's garbage strewn all over the place. Somebody's burned down the pavilion, the lookout that used to be right there on the river. Bike path's crumbling. There's trash all over the place. I know a lot of people have mentioned the trees and all things like that, and it's my understanding that none of that is going to be touched. Like you said, the bike path is going to go, or the, this road would go right on top of the current bike path. I don't see where you'd have to get into any trees. I do have a lot of experience in nature conservation and stuff. I worked as a hunting guide in Alaska for 16 years, and I know for a fact that any animals that might be pushed out during any construction will absolutely come back in there. So yeah, kind of rambling, but I'm for this. And if the city would like to see any of our five children continue to live here and put down roots, you guys need to do something to develop this city in those kind of ways. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Alan Everly?
Yeah, I happen to be Florida development and everything. I used to live on Main Avenue and everything. It had supermarkets and everything. I mean, it was nothing. Now, I'd like to see some of the buildings preserved and everything and developed. I think as far as bike path and everything, it'd be nice to have a beach there for tourism. I mean, there is some sand there. Now, I don't know if Army Corps Engineers would go along with that, but I'm actually for it and everything, if it can be developed and everything. Because I think that'll go a long way. The trees aren't to be touched. I mean, even the seagulls come back on the other part of the riverfront. So I think it'd be good. I mean, I'm always interested in developing the city. We can have a bigger, grander, national, or not national park, city park than what we have now. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Alan. Celeste?
Good evening. Celeste Robbins, 2460 Barker Street. Very outspoken against this road. I brought up a lot of points before at one of the listening posts, but I know not all the city council members were there, so. And I think most of it bears repeating. My opinion is based on a lot of research, a lot of things that I've looked into, considered a lot of other factors. It's not based on disliking change. I'm all for the city developing. I want to see Lions, any part of Clinton grow. However, the bottom line is this road is not going to accomplish that. I know that the argument, time and time again, has been that, actually, I think it was Matt Parves that said, loops make business, or something like that. Loops are good for business. Again, I took a drive through Clinton and looked at other neighborhoods that were comparable, that have main, very busy roads that go right through them, that absolutely are still in terrible shape. That sort of evidence why this road would not create more business for Lions. Second to 4th Avenue South on 2nd Street still has many vacant buildings with broken windows. And that is one of our busiest streets. 4th Street, from 2nd Avenue North to 2nd Avenue South. Comanche Avenue, 7th Avenue South, from 4th Street to 1st Street. Again, a big road that, or a, you know, a fairly well-traveled road with very little business development on it despite plenty of access. 6th Avenue South from 2nd Street to 1st Street, and even our own downtown on 5th Avenue South from 2nd to 1st Street has lots of empty buildings. Lots of access, lots of empty buildings. This is not going to increase the amount of business that goes to Lions. And I got a chance to talk to some of the citizens that are pushing for this project, and I can appreciate the amount of work that they put into it. However, sometimes you work for things and they don't work out. Sometimes people are misguided. I think that this is one of those cases. Another thing is, they think if there's more traffic coming down that way, which again, if you're not going to disturb any trees, you're just driving through a woodsy area. Is that really, you know, this big grand thing that's going to attract people? No, it doesn't. It attracts people that want the serenity of nature, that want the quiet atmosphere of that. I've also heard people say that there, that it's going to increase police presence and make that area safer. I've got my ear to the ground on a lot of the criminal stuff here in town. I've seen very little to no criminal complaints that happen on that part of the bike path. If people are worried about it, they're probably as worried any other place in town. But that spot in particular does not have a lot of crime. I've heard people say that there are people that live out on Joyce's Island. They do sometimes live out on Joyce's Island. The people that are living out on Joyce's Island are not the kind of people that are going to stop and rob you. It's a long culture difference that I don't have time to explain tonight. There are a lot of negatives to this road. There's noise pollution. It doesn't croach on the wildlife. I know he said that he thinks that it'll all come back later. It's not going to be able to come back as it was. And again, even if you weren't to touch any trees, which, mind you, this would 100% open up the door for that to happen later on. So maybe this doesn't happen now in this project, but it opens the door for it to happen later on. It's not going to be the same. It's, it's just going to damage it. The animals, the trees, all of that. And it does, again, you know, it, it's just not a worthwhile expense. I've heard a lot of people say, well, look at Leclerc, look at Dubuque, you know, they develop their riverfront. I don't want to live in Leclerc or Dubuque. I like Clinton. Our riverfront is one of our best things. Our bike path is a big part of our riverfront. So while I appreciate the hard work and I appreciate the forward-thinking-ness that this represents, again, I do not think that this road is worth it in terms of the costs, not just monetary-wise, but in terms of the loss to the community that would occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Celeste. So that's all the cards that I have, but I'll open it up for anybody else that would like to address the council on this topic. Okay, sir? And since I don't have it written down for anyone, when you come up, if you could just please say your name and your address for the record for us.
Kevin McQuestion, 27, or 2703 Roosevelt Street. There's some councilmembers that I've spoke with that are concerned about the taxpayer money or the city's money that will have to be put for this. If they cannot come up with the $900,000, does the project just go idle?
Goes away.
Huh?
It goes away.
It goes away.
Goes away.
Okay, what's the match from the city that you, they were just, what you read?
$200,000. 20% of the $1 million, so $200,000.
Okay. Do we have that? So what are we talking about?
Well, we have two years to get it. We don't have it budgeted for this time, no. And they're not saying that we could get it. Maybe the group will get it.
Okay. Here's another solution.
Okay.
Why don't we have city attorney drop a paper? You folks form an LLC or a development corp? If any money is required from the city and they don't have it, the group pays for it.
Pretty much what it is now.
That makes sense.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Also, I spoke with several people from the Corps of Engineers again today. I don't think you folks know what's involved in this. It's got to go through four to five offices. The three that I spoke with at Rock Island have no clue of this.
Nope.
None. The one thanked me for giving a heads up at the Mississippi River Project, I got his name and number here. Mississippi River Project Office, Joel Lund. He thanked me for calling him and giving him a heads up. He said, oh, it's nice to know when somebody's planning something and we don't get informed. Things to think about. The cart goes behind the horse, not in front of it.
Thank you. Come on up. Just members, state your name and your address for the record for us, please.
Hi there. Gabby Torres, 823rd Avenue North. And I was not planning on speaking tonight, but Brenda, she said, go up there. So here I am. Anyway, Mayor and councilmembers. So as you know, and I'll try to be brief. So I am a Clinton native, born and raised here by my parents, who chose to make, immigrant parents, I should say, who chose to make Clinton their home. And my dad was a doctor here for many, many years. And after he retired, and so my dad loved this town so much, he actually worked in Kalamazoo, Michigan for the last 20 years of his career and refused to let my mom put the house for sale and would drive back every weekend to be at his house, walk the riverfront, work on his yard. I'm sure Matt has seen him out there before. And so, and so as now, a second-generation Clintonian, I suppose you can say, you know, I, they really instilled in me a passion for this community. I have left this community. I lived in New York City. I lived in Seoul, South Korea for several years. I was gone for about 13 to 14 years when I came back. I took a long trip around the United States in a Chevy Impala, which I, I, depends on how your knees are, I do or do not recommend. Anyhow, I took a long trip and saw a lot of places, came back to Clinton, realized this is where I wanted to make my home. That had everything I could ever want was right here. And so, fast forward, I love this community and I have, I, and because I love it so much, I'm passionate about its development and contributing to the progress of Clinton. I put my money where my mouth is. I've purchased, I have two properties now on Main Avenue on that, the strip right before the, some, the empty lots by the river. I've invested a lot of money to rehab my properties. And, and I also am someone who, you know, I, when I was a child, I, teenager, I'd walk that dike every day. It was, brought me a lot of peace. It brought me a lot of solace. I know my dad walked it almost every day of his life. When I would come back from visiting New York and different places, I would always walk that. And so I understand people's attachment to it and, and the peace that it does bring. And also, I asked at one of our meetings, I think it was in the Deanna's meeting, I guess my question is, though, you know, I, there's a lot of people and a lot of excitement and a lot of eyes on North Avenue, particularly that main, that last drag of Main Avenue. And, and people are working really hard to make change and to make growth and to see development happen, to activate that space so that we have a place people like to go to, that business, that we're creating and fostering an ecosystem where businesses can pop up again and thrive and, and regain what was lost when the bridge moved in 19, I don't, 1960, when did the bridge move? 1960, exactly. So that's really what we're trying to create. And so I think the question is, I understand a lot of times when you're thinking about things, you're thinking about your immediate experience and your immediate need. And, and you might not see a few years down the road or a time where you might not even be on the road anymore. As a person who has a building, properties, I invest in those buildings. I consider myself a steward of those properties and I want to leave them better than how I found them so that the next person who comes along and purchases that property, I'm leaving, I'm setting them up for success and not financial failure. And so I think something for us to think about and just a consideration is how do we set up Clinton as a community to, to grow and not set it up for failure? How do we set up these people working so hard in the north end and on Main Avenue? How do we set them up for success and not financial failure? And so I just ask us to think, what kind of Clinton are we wanting to leave behind for our kids? What's our legacy? And so I am in favor of North River Drive. I think I won't possibly even be around to enjoy it, who knows? But I'd like to think that I'm leaving behind something that the future generation can enjoy and benefit from. And so that is my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dennis Slaver, 1130 North Forest Street. To his, I'm glad he brought up that point. And that brought to mind around 2001, there was the idea to put in a handicap accessible fishing pier down at the river. The State of Iowa said, we'll put some money in there, but not enough to make it happen. Matt's predecessor at the time said, I like the idea, but not enough to put any money or much money into it. And I signed the paperwork to incorporate a nonprofit 501(c)(3) entity that allowed people to make a tax-deductible donation that met the gap and took that state government money and some local government money, and boom. As you know, we now have a handicap fishing pier. So this is a community that I think can respond and would respond and has a history of responding in a positive way, if that's what we've got to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, my name is Wade Griman. I work for Snyder and Associates, and a few years back, you all hired me to help you with moving this project forward after the, the acquisition of a $650,000 grant through Chris Canoria's office and Homeland Security. A portion of that funding went to the flood resilience study for... for the entire levee throughout the city. Another portion went to forwarding the 408 permit for the actual roadway construction eventually if the funding comes through. We have been in coordination with the Corps, not the Joel Lund that was mentioned before, but we had a meeting with the Corps representative about three years ago onsite and talked through the project concept at that time. We also have a draft environmental assessment document that has been submitted to the city for review. We are tweaking it right now, and we'll probably have a formal, final document ready for submission to you all as well and the Corps within the next couple of weeks. Just the footprint has changed just a little bit for, we shortened up retaining walls and so forth. The roadway is planned to be constructed, if it is constructed, on top of the levee. The trail would be replaced at that time, that's the plan. Part of the reason for the trail replacement is for drainage. When we construct a roadway, we have to make sure that we have positive drainage within the profile and the cross-section of the roadway. In order to do that, we need to undulate the roadway profile to get the stormwater moving longitudinally and laterally. So naturally, the trail would also undulate up and down on the top of the levee. The levee top would never be cut, it would be filled, so the actual roadway and the trail is planned to be a little bit higher than what sits today, and it would be perfect view shed of the river itself. As far as the tree impacts, there is, just full disclosure, there are a few trees at the very south end of the corridor, around the curve, if you can imagine in your mind's eye, where the trail comes across Joyce's Slough and then bends and goes north along the levee, right in that corner. In order to get the roadway to fit, there are some trees that would need to be removed, but a pretty small amount. We don't anticipate any significant mitigation requirements as it relates to the environmental assessment. However, going to the CPF grant application that was, I'll say, moved forward with Congresswoman Miller Meeks's office last year, the million-dollar preliminary award. That CPF grant program did not make the reauthorization legislation that President Trump signed into law on, in March this last year. So this is a reapplication of that same project for this year's CPF program, just to clarify that. So I am available to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay. Thanks, Wade.
Thank you.
Any other citizens that would like to address the council? Come on up.
Hi. My name is Ann Colby. I live at 1315 23rd Avenue North. I also am a property owner in the Lyons District. And my dad owned a business here, very successful business, is a photographer for many, many years. And when I first heard about the project, I was a little worried about it. But then, as I took time to understand it and go sit on the levee where we walk every week with our dogs and our kids, the benefits for me as a small business owner and a resident outweighed the cost or the concern. Now, I own buildings down there, but my business is not dependent on foot traffic. So even if it was, it's unlikely that it would do anything, as Gabby brought out, immediately for my generation of business. But whoever I hopefully leave that business to someday would have the benefit of that project to add visibility to that area. When I was a little eight or nine, I used to ride my bike from my dad's business here downtown to the north end, and there was ice cream shops and magic shops and all sorts of things that was fun and safe and active for you to do down in Lyons. It made people want to go down to Lyons. And we are missing that critical, I don't know, community value. And I know people in Lyons are desperately trying to bring it back with the Wine Mox and the Christmas Walk and Paint It Back Project and the market. So we're already putting efforts into visibility there. This project, which I clearly am for, would add visibility. I also am from Leclerc. And Leclerc, prior to revitalization of our downtown area, did not do well with tourism dollars. Now they do fairly well. Businesses come to Leclerc for that roadway access and they stay there because they can survive there. The businesses are empty in Lyons because it feels kind of like a cast-aside sister, where there's great bones, not a lot of financial resource from the city for, to buy those buildings, to rehab those buildings, to invest in that area. I mean, I had a lease for a museum to be brought into one of my spaces in Lyons, and ultimately, they broke their contract and paid a lot of money to do so because the visibility's not there. There's not people driving by unless you're going to select places. So making that part of, as much as it's kind of a hot-button subject, making that part of a River Drive corridor from Leclerc, from the bike path, the dike, on down to Lyons, could be some really healthful revitalization and lead you straight back up to the park or anywhere you want to go. Right now, we're just kind of this weird, awkward chunk of land that everybody forgets about. I want my kids to be able to enjoy Lyons the way I enjoyed Lyons. It's why I moved back to Clinton. That's why I moved my business here and bought three and a quarter parcels of property in Lyons. There's a lot of potential there. One of the prior speakers spoke about increasing police presence. It's not about increasing police presence, but when you have a roadway from one major thoroughfare to another, you will have more police patrolling. And on my building, I would not mind that. We have had to replace windows from gunshots down at the post office. So I don't think it hurts to have that connection to the dike down into Lyons because there are areas down there that definitely should be better observed. So I'm for the project. I would love to see Lyons and Clinton kind of return to what it was so that when my kids take over my business or my husband's business, they continue to have value and can stay here and build the community up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens that would like to address the council? All right, I'll open it up. Oh, come on up.
I didn't want to do this. My name's Gary Parker. I live at 111 North 13th Street. I have walked that dike, that area that you're talking about putting the road on. And I've walked it a lot, in the mornings, especially in the wintertime, because of the snow removal on the sidewalks. I go down there and walk. And I've seen eagles roosting in the trees. I've actually seen eagles swoop down in the river and get fish and eat to eat. I just think it's a shame that we're gonna lose that, because if you put a road up on that dike, those eagles are not gonna be there. They don't like to be around people, and they don't want to be around cars. So I just am totally against this. I think people up in Lyons, I think you need to get some more businesses up there that people want to come up there to. You talk about Leclerc, well, they got breweries, they got distilleries. They have a lot of things to go down there to do. There's nothing up there in Lyons. Now, there's a few businesses, but down where you're talking about, on the east end of it, and there is bad spots down there. I'm not too sure when feels safer down on the dike than down there. So I just, I'm totally against this, and I just would like to have someplace to be able to walk here close and get away from it, not have cars running by me all the time. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Gary.
I'm Julie Velma. I live in Cameron Oaks, and I walk the bike path every day, pretty much. I don't think it's in that bad a condition. It could need some help. And the garbage that was there for a couple of days is now picked up. My point is, is that's the only place where families and kids can take their kids or anybody and walk without having to worry about traffic. You know, you go to Eagle Point, I've walked up there, and you always have to look back, and you have to get out of the way every time a car comes. People can't take their kids there. You know, there's no way they can take their kids there to take a bike path or to a ride. Down Fifth Avenue, you know, people are scared to go in between both, you know, where the bike path or whatever is. What else was I gonna say? I don't understand why Second Street and Third Street, those are two streets that can go right to Main Avenue. And what about if this, this road goes this way and you still have Second Street? Well, what about all those businesses? That, those people aren't gonna go to those businesses and spend their money or anything then, because they'll go right up to Main Avenue. And the bike path, once you get on it, it's all trees. You know, you don't see anything until you get up to Main Avenue. So I'm totally against it.
Julie, we need your street address, please, for the record.
2215 13th Avenue South.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brenda Thornton. My home address is 2700 Willitsen Drive, but my family owns Sweetheart Bakery and Homer's Deli. You guys have heard me talk up here about the project. I'm not gonna talk about the project. I'm going to talk about those people who got up here and talked. I am not an emotional person. These people have put their time and money into this area up here, and for people to get up and say, "There is nothing where they work," you are wrong, because walk down there once and see what Gabby has done, see what the Toyota building used to look like. And it's not this trashy building anymore. For those of you who think nothing's up there, have not looked at the impact of the Sawmill Museum. They're spending $500,000 to bring a troll, you know, to that end of the community. And for those of you who say there's nothing up there, or why would you go up there? The only thing that's telling me is, obviously, you have not been up there, because there is stuff up there. I spoke with Pastor Nick the other day, who purchased a cage, and he says, "It is my congregation's mission to help revitalize that neighborhood. Neighborhoods are important." And we're losing that tradition of raising our kids in the neighborhood. So Lyons Post Office, how often do we use the Lyons Post Office? Annie and John own that. 100 years ago, when that place went belly up, the bank called Chuck and I, "Hey, this thing is going on a tax sale. Would you guys be interested in buying it?" So I know that post office is not a big moneymaker, because I've been there, done that for 12 years. But yet, they do that for our neighborhood. And for people to say there's nothing up there when they work hard is BS. And if you're saying that, you obviously haven't been there. And some of these people who sit here and say that, I know them. They don't mean to be disrespectful to these young adults who have chose to come back to our community. So I would just like to say, there is stuff up on that end of Lyons. You guys are all gonna grin at me when I say this, because I've said this for 15 years. The only thing that is not up there on that end of Lyons is you folks who are sitting right here. Our council shows no presence up there. At one of our listening posts, I posed the question to people, you know, what is Clinton's five-year plan on the east end of Main Avenue? The council people who were there kind of looked down at the ground, and I said, "Well, nothing for five years. What have we got planned for 10 years?" You know, they looked out at the ground again. You know, I just, you know what I'm saying. And I guess I challenge you guys to remember that Clinton is one of the unique places that has two business districts. And I think a lot of times, we forget that. So I encourage you to remember that there are two business districts, and I think those would appreciate a little lovin' up there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm in Lyons all the time. I just want to say.
Yep, yeah, come up to the podium so the folks online can hear you.
I really didn't mean to say there's nothing up there. They just need more things to draw people up there. Food trucks on a special night like they do down here on Fifth Avenue. Food trucks and music, or they need to do something else up there to draw the people up there. There's plenty of roads. That's all I want to say. I didn't mean that there's nothing up there.
Thanks, Gary. Anyone else that would like to address the council? All right, I'll open it up for council comments.
Can we first ask Pat to speak to the attorney and confirm that he is not in a conflict of interest when he does make his vote?
I've already given Mr. Dederman private advice.
I'd like the public to hear it, because it's been all over, and I just want everybody to know what happened.
It's, I can't disclose that publicly, but it's his conflict to waive, and he's more than willing to explain himself, and I think he could do that.
As long as Pat's comfortable, I'm good.
Okay. Any discussion from council members? Councilmember Obrin?
I'll go ahead and discuss. I attended two of the listening posts. We had 28 people at one, 48 people at the other one. At the first one, there was 20...
12 minus, not counting the Lyons group and city people.
So, so people that emailed me, phoned me, saw me person-to-person everywhere, I even had a couple people, I'm in the middle of aquasize class, and we talked. Okay, so people do, are not afraid to approach us as council members. That is a true sign of that, hey, we listen, yes. Sometimes it's, it's hard to listen, sometimes it's easy to listen. Of all those people which talked to me or saw me personally, that was 109 people. Of those people, only five of them said, "Hey, yes, I'm for it. No, I'm not for it," with no justification and no comment. The remaining people that talked to me individually gave me comments and justifications whether they were in favor or not in favor of the proposed road. When I started evaluating it, and even tonight, the speakers that we had tonight, to a person... to a person, those people said something about recreation in relation to the river. So, what our question here is tonight is, how do we access the river? Do we access it with more locations? Do we access it with upgraded access? Do we improve our amenities on the riverfront? That's what I'm hearing. One of the ideas is a road. Certainly, the number of people that contacted me, it was 67% opposed, 33% for. I'm still not totally opposed to the road, but what I am totally opposed to is that we're not doing anything as citizens as a whole now to improve our amenities on the riverfront. So, that's where our real, if we're gonna do some money, like even some of the people that said, "Hey, there's an issue with silting." We know that up here, we're doing things up here from that, but even that is access on the riverfront. That's what we need to be after. Is this road the answer to maybe that? I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball, I don't know. But looking at what we need to be doing, we're looking at maybe a different way to approach, because everybody says, in not so many words, "We want better access to the river." "We want more access to the river, we want more amenities so we can sit with our families and look out over the river." That's what we are after, almost to a person, regardless of whether you're for or against the road. So, that's something that I think we really need to look at when we start, you know, "Hey, after our vote tonight, whatever that vote may be," that's an issue that I'm gonna start taking up with our fellow council members and our citizens. That's what we need. How do we get that access to the river? Thank you.
All right. Any other council...
I have a couple questions about the money. Now, first of all, this is just an application for a grant, correct?
Correct.
Or a reapplication?
Reapplication, but same, yep.
So, and it's for a million dollars, and we have to have a 20% match, which is $200,000. The total project is $1,900,000, correct?
To get the planning and design completed, yes.
Right. So, if we come up with $200,000, that takes away, or $1,900,000, that takes away from the $1,900,000, so that puts $700,000 that has to become, has to come up with. And how long do they have to come, or we have to come, two years? Jason?
Wade, do you know the timeline?
Yeah, I can give you a rough estimate. So, the applications are usually received about this time every year, and then at the end of the calendar year is when Congress evaluates whether or not the projects would be funded through the CPF program, and then putting them into the reauthorization. So, by the time the project actually receives the grant award, it'll probably be this time next year. And then after that award, there's probably about a six- to nine-month period of negotiating the funding agreement between the recipient, which would be the city, and the DOT, or the Corps, depending upon which federal agency that it comes through. Then you would have to go through a federal procurement process to hire a consultant based on qualifications to get them going on the project. So, it would probably be two years before any money is expensed from today, if the project is awarded.
And at the time that it's awarded, we have to have the $900,000? Or the $700,000? Am I saying that correctly, or am I...
Yeah, so, there would be, in order to do the design, it's gonna take about two to three years to get through that. So, that full $900,000 would not be expensed in one fiscal year. It would be stretched out over two or three years as the match. But you would probably wanna have something in place that shows that you have the money to match the million dollars. And that would be at the $900,000 level, if that's what the actual cost is.
And that's what we don't have.
And the local match can be city, or philanthropic, or other government agencies, the state DOT, or somebody else if you get other funding.
The match can be that?
Yes. It can't be, you can't have more than 20, or you can't have more than 80% of federal aid. So, you could even get some additional federal aid to hit the 1.9 total.
Wade, why we got you here? We've, I think to date, we've spent probably over $500,000 on related, things related to this project. Is any, can any of that be counted towards the $200,000?
This would be a separate action from that.
It has to be separate, okay.
Nice thought.
Try.
So, does the $200,000 match need to be accounted for to apply? Do they need, or the 200 or the 900, does that need to be in a letter telling them where we're gonna be getting that?
It would be probably in a resolution of support. You'd probably want that text in the resolution itself, committing the...
It is in the resolution, but the city does not have the money.
In the CIP. So, eventually, you would have to work that into the CIP by the time the award comes through.
The other question is, is that nobody knows what's gonna happen in the future. In the event that the money, at the time, they say they're gonna award it, we don't have the match to complete it, what happens? Or if we get the money, but we don't have enough money to complete the project?
If the, if the money for the match is not there, and you're fiscally not able to complete the project, you would probably have to give the federal aid back, and put that back into the coffers of the federal government.
So, we're really looking at almost five years from today before that design would actually be in, complete in its entirety?
I would say that's realistic, yes.
Okay, and then, just one...
How long would that planning and design be viable for, or good for? Because obviously, it's not gonna be a forever...
Right, so, you would probably have about five years before you would need to revisit the environmental document. Those have a sunset date. There are certain aspects of the environmental document that you might need to revisit before that.
Because of where it's at, probably?
Pardon?
Because of where it's at, most likely?
Yeah, but that's generally a rule of thumb, that if there's endangered species, you need to probably reinvestigate those habitats more frequently than the five-year period.
If we have to reinvestigate, that's at an additional cost.
I'm sorry, what's that?
If we have to reinvestigate the environment, that would be at an additional cost.
Typically, yes. Yep. And the 408 permitting process with the Corps is a multi-year process. We're probably about 30% through that, right now with the prior money that was spent.
Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Honored. I'm looking at this as saying, "Help make the North River Drive project shovel-ready." So, we get all this done, this is our preliminary, this has nothing to do with the actual cost of the road, correct? So, where does that money come from?
That would either need to be borrowed for, or...
And how much is that? Do anyone know what that would actually cost to put that actual road?
Roughly, 20 million.
20 million.
But that's at today's cost.
Correct.
I think the original purpose of this, when we started last year, was to get a shovel-ready project to apply for federal funding like we did for Manufacturing Drive, to have that project ready to go. So, that's, or that's been the, so, this goes back many years. So, when we started applying for Manufacturing Drive, we had a big meeting on this, and it was, there was an agreement made that we wouldn't apply for North River Drive, we would apply for Manufacturing Drive, and then North River Drive would be next on the docket. So, this goes, you know, the folks that are passionate about this have been working on this for a long time. So, I remember those meetings, they were down at Grove Clinton, I think it was the chamber at that time, and they were heated conversations at that point, and we applied for Manufacturing Drive, didn't get the grant, I think we applied a second, was it three, third times the charm, I believe?
Yeah, I think so.
Or four?
It was four.
Okay. So, it was, it was always discussed as if this was going to happen, and we were gonna have a design done to have this project ready for more federal funding, similar to what we've done with Manufacturing Boulevard, basically. So, that's my best recall of everything. So, yeah, it's not an inexpensive project by any means.
So, shovel-readies just means it's, the plans are there, they're done, and so they can be funded? Is that correct?
Then you take that and apply for funding, as if, you know, an infrastructure funding bill may come along. "Oh, we've got this great project, it's already designed, ready to go." Boom, you submit the application along with the design, and you hope you get it.
And can I, can I just say that the Lyons group has maintained that they are not asking taxpayers to pay for this, that they will work their hardest to come up with the money to pay for the road if we can get it to the shovel-ready point?
That, that's, so, I just wanna clarify that. My understanding was that the, the folks that are working on this were going to raise the $700,000 to, to provide for that funding for the completion of the study. Has that changed, Pat? Is that still planned? Still the same? So, basically, the city's part is the 200,000, I think. And that, I think that aligns what we agreed with before. You know, guys, when this project goes back even further, it was only from the North Bridge, or 18th Avenue North to Main Avenue, and then it got expanded to go all the way down. And I can't remember exactly when that happened, but I did...
2011 plan.
2011, so it was that long ago.
20th Avenue North.
Or 20th, okay.
Up to the river.
And, you know, I kinda wish we were at that spot still, because that is where the view is of the river, and I feel like that is what you're taking advantage of, and that preserves the nature-esque portion of the bike path, right? Where, where we're talking about, we enjoy that, we want it to remain that way. And I don't know, Wade, is that still an option? Like, let's say we're gonna move forward with this, but, you know, the stretch from 19th, let's just say roughly 18th, 19th to Main Avenue is a much more feasible endeavor. I mean, much more easy to complete. Could, let's say we get, we apply, because I don't think we can deviate largely from our application at this time. What if we get that funding and we change the dynamics of how we're gonna design this? And let's say we set it up as Phase One, 19th to Main, and Phase Two. Is that, can we do that with this funding, and can that be part of what you guys are engaged to do?
I would, I would, if, if that's the desire of the council, I would recommend that the application represent that footprint.
Would that be hard to modify at this point? Because I believe we have to, if we were to proceed, we have to do this fairly quickly.
It would take a little effort. There's nights and weekends, we can figure that out. But the thing is, is that if you wanted to apply as you did last year with the same footprint, all the way across the slough up to 25th, and then decided to change it, it would take an act of Congress to change it, because the legislation is specific to the project limits.
Roger.
So, I would strongly recommend, if, if you wanna shorten it, shorten it in the application now, so you don't have to go through that.
I mean, that's something that weighs on my mind. It, it largely has been, well, funding it is a large concern, I'm concerned about that, too. I'm not, I am planning on the, not just the Lyons group, the folks passionate about this, coming up with that funding mechanism. I'm planning on that, that's, for me, that's a, that's, has to happen. But I also think if we really wanna see this project actually be a tangible thing we can do, I think that has, that's, my opinion is, is that is how it has to be done.
And if I could maybe ask, answer the second part to your question, if we would need to revisit anything, if you did shorten it up. So, the environmental study did not include the area of a western extension to 20th?
Okay.
It was essentially just along the...
Just going straight down, yeah.
So, that piece would need to be revisited and studied.
It was like an 18th because 20th now has the origin.
Yep. But, on, on the flip side, that work could be included with the application as well. So, if the NEPA study needed to be amended, you would wanna write that into the application, that work. The 408 permitting process would probably be cleaner if it was a shorter stretch. And the 408 permitting process is the mechanism by which the Corps would approve the project itself. So, hopefully that answered the question.
It's, it's great that you were able to come, Wade, because there's, you know, it's hard to know all these questions, you know, prior to the meeting, because, you know, everybody comes up and has a new perspective, and then I start, you know, my, yeah.
We're gonna go to Councilmember Obran, go ahead.
I wanna dito what you just said, Councilman Seeley, because a number of people that we were talking about that have that history with this project always go back to that 20th Avenue North idea. And, you know, there is a very good opportunity there at 18th. That, you know, so it's something that, you know, I would heavily consider here, what we're doing here.
I just feel like it takes a project that's really not, that really is financially difficult to, to complete, and it changes it and makes it something that might be feasible to complete, especially if some federal funding comes along. I concur with everybody that's sent emails. I like the nature, focus on what we got, don't waste money. So, I'm not disagreeing with any of you on that. And I like the nature I run on the bike path, I, I like it, I like the quietness. I also like the part that has the road, so, but I like the fact that there's two sections, right? You know, I got the part where I kinda see what's going on, the other part, I'm, you know, don't have a lot going on, so. But I think, based on the emails I've received and the feedback, and then also talking with some of the folks that are really passionate about this project, I think a two-pronged approach to this, and probably, and just focusing on Prong One right now, I think it alleviates a lot of concerns and kinda changes the dynamics for me a little bit.
I would concur.
So, well, I was waiting for Cody, I kinda forgot what I was gonna say. So, I, I too, I've talked to Chuck and Brenda at length, and I've told them I like the shorter version of this project much better. It makes it more palatable to people, it makes it easier to finance. But, an alternate, because I, I am with Greg on the pros and cons, it's about two-thirds against and about a third for, the road. Can the grant be changed to anything at this point, or are we too late in the game? Meaning, if, if the vote today is a no, and I, I don't know how anybody's voting, so I'm just saying if, can this go to a cultural center up there on the east end of Main Avenue? Or can it go to, you know, a fishing pier? Can it go to something else?
There, there is parameters for the community project funding that you have to be within. So, the project that you submit can be anything, as long as it's within those different categories. Fair enough, is that right?
Yeah, it's essentially different buckets of funding. Some of it's based on transportation, some of it's based on HUD, some of it's based on...
Public health and safety.
Yep. So, it would have to fit within the parameters of one of those. I think there's nine different buckets of funding.
We'd have our work cut out for us, so wouldn't we? Getting it ready by, getting it ready in time.
And the resolution would be due immediately. So, it would have to be on this council meeting for the resolution, because they need a resolution like this one.
Gotcha.
Can I say something quick? Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was speaking with, just in case this question's come up, I spoke with the congressional representative. He's like, "Certainly, it'd be easier to keep it at this late stage, to keep it exactly the same as last year." Just for his staff, be easier for him. If we do change it, as Wade said, it needs to be consistent with either local road infrastructure, streetscape improvements, housing rehabilitation, workforce training centers, water or sewer infrastructure, or a project that meets a compelling local need consistent with statutory purposes, which is, is a number of things. Community centers, food banks, disadvantaged neighborhoods, youth and senior centers. But if we change it to that, it's just, it, it really needs to happen immediately. But if we change it to that, it's just, it, it really needs to happen immediately. He said that, that we could stretch it out to early next week and submit a grant application, but it would take a council action. So anything that changes, it doesn't matter. I mean, nothing's guaranteed. There's no guarantees that we would get any of this funding. The guarantee that what we would have is congressional support. It's just more work on their end if we change the grant.
Mm-hmm.
So you can do whatever you need to do in, in order to try to keep the million dollars. It's just easier for their staff if we keep it the same. But if that's, if the council wants to change it, we'll work as hard as we can to make sure that we have a, application to the, to the government.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
So I think at this point, can, Wade, were you right? We could amend this to keep it on the road project, but if we want to shorten it up, all we have to do is amend this resolution, put that in there? Heard you correctly?
If you don't mind, I wouldn't mind reading the resolution one more time. So the roadway would technically still be called North River Drive, correct?
Correct, correct. But like 18th Avenue to 25th.
Yeah, that would need to be edited. Or yeah, but that doesn't, I don't see that on here for the limits. It would be written into the verbiage of the application narrative itself, but I believe, maybe, maybe Patrick would have a better idea of this, but I don't-
Well, I think the resolution should at least not conflict with the actual submitted documents. So whatever that description is, it should match what we're submitting, at least, at least-
It's pretty vague.
It can, it can be relatively vague, but it cannot conflict with what we're submitting.
No, it just references North River Drive, it doesn't reference a starter endpoint, so this resolution's pretty much-
I think it's vague enough.
Yeah, I think, I think as long as this is consistent with what we submit, which sounds like it's broad enough, we should be fine. I, I'm not a federal bureaucrat, but you probably know as best as I do, Wade, on that one, but, you know, I-
There's no predicting that.
I think if our resolution is accurate-
They're not gonna have a problem. Okay, good.
My, my biggest thought about this is taking out all the emotions of whether you afford it or not, the, the price tag on construction is what concerns me, because it, it has not been put in any of our plans for the short term or the long term, and that, that would be, for me, what I would need to understand, is, is how it's gonna get constructed, because if you add, let's just say 20 million, because that's what we're saying, if you added 20 million to the borrowing, not only is that gonna raise our debt capacity extremely high, but the tax levy is gonna jump quite a bit, putting a $20 million project out there, right? And I don't know what that number is off the top of my head, but that, that concerns me. I think the 200,000, most likely we can figure that out, right? We've, we've done that in the past, we could look at it. But, but beyond that, and then also the, would we be able to get it done in 10 years, right? And I don't know if we'd be able to scrape the funding together for $20 million in 10 years. We're, we're doing good financially, and we're in a good spot, but that's still a very, very large number, because I think our total borrowing capacity's in the 80, 80 million?
Well, 80, 80% of that.
Well, yeah, correct, yeah.
You're looking at 20, 20 million.
So me, taking all the stuff out of it, the, the, the dollars and cents is what concerns me with the whole thing, right? Because I don't, I don't know we have, I don't know if we have a great plan, if this goes through and we get the funding and the planning and design gets going, right? And then some of us may not be sitting here then, because that's a couple of years, right? So, it, we, we haven't planned, I'll say we haven't planned at all for this, really, or, or well, because we're still working on manufacturing in Bluff, right? That's where our focus has been.
That's what I was gonna share with you, as you mentioned that. So manufacturing, drive, and bluff is $42 million. The rise grant we got from the federal government was 15. We saved 7 million, 7.2 million over five years of state funds. That gets you to 50%. So let's use that same example. So 50% of 20 million, you need to have $10 million.
Correct.
Well, but Wade, if we cut this from, cut this over and down by over half, there's no way we're still talking $20 million, so-
You'd get rid of the bridge too, which is a big cost.
Yeah, it's a big cost. I mean, it's gotta cut it in half, at least, maybe more. Um, so that, you know, that changes, you know, I, when we, I don't remember having all our ducks in a row on, and I, I'm not arguing with you, I agree, we gotta be good stewards with money. I mean, my, my thoughts on this are, this is, it's federal funding and, and, you know, other funding sources, it's not CIP dollars, and I don't mind having projects ready to go, because you never know what the, by the time this is ready, there's gonna be a new administration at the, at the White House.
Or two.
Yeah, yeah. You, you don't know what their agenda's gonna be, and they may be like the last ones that threw money out, like it was, you know, their, you know, the printer was working good.
And this, and this, and this could get punted, punted again in the fall.
It could, totally. We don't even know if we're gonna get this.
Absolutely.
I, I would be okay, so the folks that talked a lot about, against this, and Celeste, I, I, I understand your, trust me, I, I understand where you're coming from, but as far as the nature thing, this going from the bridge, I mean, does that alleviate concerns on that aspect? Okay.
David?
Um, I spoke earlier-
Come on up to the podium. We got folks, we probably have a few online watching, so, thank you.
Thank you again. I did speak earlier, and my main concern is Joyce's Island.
Yep.
That is, as my sister-in-law put it, i- i- it's just unbelievable.
Yep.
I mean, it's, it's a, an urban oasis.
Yep.
You can go through there.
I agree.
And I don't want to appear negative, and no, I'm not totally against a road. Matter of fact, I think the road should go, and you're close, 17th Avenue North, there is a crossing or going across the railroad track at 17th Avenue North and that substation. That could be used along with that access road that's already there, and why Lyons isn't going all the way to 25th Avenue North and down around Grant, because 25th is blocked off at the end, at the railroad tracks. So that would be a perfect solution for that whole top area.
Okay.
I'm not totally opposed to this.
Okay.
But anything going across Joyce's Island? Yes.
Yeah. Well, and I, and I-
And, uh, oh, and I just got a little off track, but at the same time, like I said, I think it would be great, and I think we're missing the boat on, Greg brought it up, we're missing the whole thing on this, on the riverfront.
Mm-hmm.
When you can take your bicycle and go from the railroad bridge to Eagle Point Park, there's nowhere on the river, on Iowa, on this river, you can do that. And we should be, ride the river, promoting this bike path all the way from the railroad bridge to Eagle Point Park.
Yep. I agree. That's a fun ride.
That's, it's not just that I'm against this thing, I'm not, just anything going across Joyce's Island.
Correct.
That's on the Mississippi Flyway, Illinois, you can't hunt over there, you can't in Iowa, but not in Illinois.
Yep.
And that, that's my opinion on that.
Perfect.
And when you see the firefighters out there with their boot, please fill the boot.
Well, you know, Greg was talking about river access, and as I'm sitting here kinda daydreaming a little bit, you know, where that road will come up onto the levee by the, the North Bridge, it's gonna be a great area for vehicle parking to access that recreational area.
And there's a lot of city-owned property in that area already.
A lot of city-owned property, because you got your access point at 9th Avenue North, right? And then your other access point is on Main Avenue, however, you do have to walk all the way up, you know, there's a lot of folks that, you know, there's a gal named Sharon, if, if she's watching, she goes down there, walks every morning at like 4:30 in the morning, which is way too early, but, you know, over time, those stairs have gotten harder and harder for her to get up, to, you know, to get up to that, that point. So that would be a more, and I'm just talking crap now, you know, so, but anyhow, well, I guess where I'm at is if we can deviate to the shorter version of this, I think I'm, I'm okay with going forward, because I think that alleviates the majority of the concerns that have been brought forward to me.
Yeah.
Cool. We'll get you, oh, go ahead, Celeste, we'll have him go first.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, your, your study isn't even done yet, and he's saying it's $20 million. In five years, you know it's gonna go up 20, 25%.
Oh, yeah.
So now you're talking $25 million, plus the study's gonna go up, which is gonna probably go to $3 million. You got $28 million, you don't have a better use for 20, even if a short version, but you don't have a better use for $28 million, and the streets are on Clinton right now? How long, how long the roadway, we talking?
Two miles.
Two miles? So you're gonna spend $15 million a mile?
Again, the group that is pushing for this, they're, they're not-
But what, they don't get the funding?
Then the road maybe doesn't happen, because the city does not have that in our plans right now.
Didn't you see, find out if they can get the funding before you spend the $3 million on a study?
Well, I-
The study's being funded by the grant and the, the citizens, not your taxpayer dollars, except for 200,000. But we agreed to 200,000 several times now.
Yeah.
And they didn't get it. They're just reapplying for something we already, see, nobody was here a year ago when we applied for this, so, and now it's becoming, and it's a hot topic because of Duitt Park, I, we all know that.
Yeah.
Right? So, um, so it's, we're not even doing a new action, it's something we've already done once. Yeah.
I'm just, I guess, there's just, you know, a lot of money for something that's-
Well, I, and I'm not disagreeing with you, it is a lot of money, yep.
Celeste?
So after our, after the last listening post, I went up and I talked to Brenda, and she had mentioned, there were, there were a couple of us sitting there and talking, and I've talked to a lot of other people that are of the same mind that I am, and that we are not a fan of this project as it is planned right now, and she said, well, they thought about like the North Bridge area to Main Avenue, and almost unanimously, all of us were like, that's a way better idea, because it would still preserve a lot of that natural area. I'm still not convinced that it's going to create the business that they're hoping that it would, but if that is something that you guys could commit to instead of this longer project, I think you'd probably have a lot more buy-in from people like me.
Okay. I too don't think it's going to improve business up there. I think that people got old, they passed away, their families didn't want to take over their businesses, some of them burnt down. I don't think the road's a bad idea. I do not think it's going to spark business.
So I'll propose an amendment to this, to change this project to 18th Avenue North to Main Avenue, apply in that manner, and then design in that manner, and move forward. With that way, the city commitment in, based on my amendment, is $200,000 max, what we already committed a year ago, and the rest of the funds, whatever that may be, has, has to be raised as, as planned.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Second.
There is a second. Councilmember Oberon, I'm gonna go to you, and then I'll go to Jason.
So just a quick, so we're talking about our project would be North, North River Drive.
Basically.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Jason?
Oh, I just wanted to mention, if, if you're gonna go from 18th Avenue North to Main Avenue, you still have to have a bridge over the railroad tracks and the slough-
True.
-to get up there. So a pretty substantial project that would have to touch down, probably near Roosevelt Street or something, to get up that high over the tracks and over the slough.
Okay.
And so it would still be, I mean, not, I'm not trying to throw a wrench into the plans, but it would still be fairly expensive, so I would think we would want to keep it at 1.9 for design purposes.
Yeah.
And then, I don't know, Wade can come up-
You can't drive over railroad tracks there?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you could try to get a permit for that, through the CP, but you would have to have a bridge over the slough.
Yep, yep.
Of course.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Jason, I'm sorry to throw a wrench, but we just closed a bunch of crossings.
We did, yeah, but 18th is, is still an active crossing, just for the substation. It's a gravel crossing that a line uses.
I've-
So you'd have to improve that into a public, uh, grid crossing.
Never taken that path, so-
Which would be hard to do, but you, you'd have to work with the railroad on that.
Okay.
True.
All right, so we have an amendment, a motion and a second for the amendment to this resolution. Um, still open for discussion on the amendment.
Okay, I, I do have one question. So even if we get this shovel-ready, and with the 1.9, correct?
Mm-hmm.
If we don't do anything with it for the next 10 years, so we just wasted 1.9 million dollars to have it sit forever if we never get any money to even do the half, the short end or the long end of the road? Is that correct?
Correct.
So, okay, okay, I just want to make sure, because I can see what you'd be doing-
We wasted, we wasted $200,000.
Yeah, it's only $200,000.
But, but, but having the grant, if we receive the grant, if you, we receive the grant and we still do the 200 match, never get to do the road, we have just, if we receive it, we still threw away 1.9 million, or one, 1 million that we would get from them with the match, when we could've did something else with it. Is that correct?
Yeah, you would have, if we get the million, you'd have to finish the project. Federal funds require you to finish the project, so this, this planning and design, if you get the million-
Even if you take 15, 30 years to finish the project?
No, there's gonna be a timeframe.
There will be a timeframe, okay.
Correct, yes. Usually three, three years, does that sound right, or no?
Yeah, if the, if the funding is for design and permitting, you would have to finish that scope of work within a certain timeline.
And we have no money. We have no money.
For construction.
Because the 20 million, right, is for the long, this construction, or if we go half, it's still, we have to have that amount of money to complete that project within three years?
No, 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 no. So this project is just the planning and design?
Yes, that's right.
So if you get the million, we're just gonna use the 1.9 because it's here?
Yeah.
If we get the million, you, you have to finish that planning and design to the 1.9, right?
Okay, so a shovel-ready?
Correct.
Okay, what about-
The rest of it is not tied to that million?
It is not?
No.
But, it'll just still be, we'll just be waiting.
So what you do is you hope federal grants come along, you apply with that, with that design, and you're right, if it never takes, takes place, it's 1.9, it, it, it's an opportunity cost is what it is, and it's a lot of money. I agree with you, Eartha. Oh, yeah, it's a lot of money.
I didn't want to sit here and make a vote, and I didn't understand completely.
You're right.
Yep, that's good.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
I just got one thing. When you say it's federal money, that, you act like it doesn't matter, but the federal money, all these people's money right here.
That, that matters, and it's all our money, yeah.
Well, we start messing, we don't, we've spent $3 million on a study, and nothing's been done yet, and you're gonna pay money for a study that he says is not, no effect, I'm just, that's gonna be $2.5 million or such and such, you know it's gonna go higher than that, you have to know that. It's, his study's gonna go above what he's telling you. Your construction costs are gonna go above what he's telling you, and in six years down the road, it's gonna be 25% more, you've got all this money, but even if I just say it's a million dollars, it's federal money, it's our money.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah. And you need to call, you need to call your legislators that have these programs.
All right, okay, okay, okay. Let's, let's move on, let's move on. Um, we're not gonna, Mr. Nichols, come on up, sir. You're fine.
Yeah, everybody in the streets is taxpayers. We all pay federal taxes. It's my understanding that as a community, we only get eighty percent of our federal tax dollars back here in Clinton. So I'd like to challenge everybody here to, whether it's this project or not, start doing projects that get us a hundred percent of our tax dollars. I'm tired of paying federal tax dollars to sandbag Davenport, build roads in Polk County, and all the rest of this stuff. That's it.
Thank you. All right. Any more discussion from council? Okay, so we have, uh, an amendment to the, the project's scope to shorten that road up. That's what we're, that's what we're voting on, that amendment. Last chance for any discussion from anyone. Okay, can we have roll call on that amendment, please?
Councilmember Shemmers. Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
No.
Kearns.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the amendment to change the project's scope passes. Pat, just for procedural, because I'm blanking here, do I need to, do I need to vote on the full, or the original resolution now?
Yeah, now we should vote on the resolution. Well, it's, the resolution hasn't been amended, but...
That was the amendment.
That, I guess that is the amendment to the extent that it is.
So now we're voting as amended.
Right.
Okay, just want to make sure I'm doing it right here. Okay. I guess I don't even have an emotion. I need to entertain a motion for the resolution as amended. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the resolution as amended. Last chance for discussion. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
No.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
No.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
No.
Kearns.
Four to three? Okay, that motion passes. Okay, moving on. Councilmember Shemmers.
Let me find where we're at here.
Nine F.
It's rare you show me where we're at.
I know, I can, well, I have the last one.
Your honor, I have a resolution to establish a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus parentheses CDBG-CV Homelessness Operations Assistance Application. I move the resolution to be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion on this?
Do you guys want me to just talk about it, or no, or yes?
Um, so basically, IEDA reached out to us mid-April. There's some CDBG-CV funding that's available. They have about two million dollars that they've set aside to distribute out to shelters in our community. Should I introduce myself? Sorry. Shannon Sandro-Welzine, YWCA Executive Director. Um, YWCA is the general homeless provider for Clinton and Jackson Counties. Um, so basically, we had IEDA reach out regarding some CDBG-CV funds that are available, two million dollars that they are basically allocating to fourteen agencies across the state that would like to apply for the funding, um, because we already receive shelter assistance funds through Iowa Finance Authority. We're one of the eligible agencies. From our understanding of it, there's roughly fifty mil, or fifty million, fifty thousand dollars available to come to YWCA Clinton. Um, we would use that funding to provide non-congregate emergency shelter to Clinton and Jackson Counties. Uh, there's no, no, there's no match from the city. Um, it's very much like what we did with the childcare and the facility upgrade, uh, where you guys are just kind of, you have to make the application. We'd work with ECIA to administer that application. Um, obviously, we have experience doing that and working with Liz at ECIA to do so. Um, I, I can't see any reason why we wouldn't want to pass up this additional funding for our community to be able to help people with emergency shelter, so any questions? We have to set, it has to do the public hearing thing. Um, do you guys have any questions?
I do. Oh, great, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Kearns?
Uh, I just want to confirm that this money will go for true homeless people and not to the permanent supportive housing shelter.
Yeah, it would go for, I mean, you know, our housing programs, we were, we have supportive housing, we have rapid rehousing.
But this is homeless, and that's chronically homeless in a different class, so is this going for the permanent supportive? Or is this gonna help people that are...
No, it would be for shelter, so it would, now it might, what we need to understand is that the way that we, we work in our community to provide emergency shelter with some other agencies. So the county has emergency shelter money, Information Referral has emergency shelter money. And the way that we kind of divvy things up amongst ourselves is, I'm not the county, I think it's kind of county-related with the Sheriff's Department, but Information Referral, basically, what we end up doing at the Y is we will shelter people that will, are applying for permanent housing. So they want to be housed, not just get out of the temperatures for one night. So in most cases, I mean, we can shelter one, a person for one night, but usually what we try to do is make sure that they're signed up, that they're seeking assistance, so that when we place them in shelter, that they have a pathway to permanent housing, so we're not just kind of, um...
So that's a separate venture than the permanent supportive housing that you're building right now?
Yes, I mean, we might use it to shelter someone for five nights and then place them in supportive housing if they're eligible for that program, or we might shelter someone for three nights and place them in rapid rehousing.
You might shelter them there?
Oh, we would not shelter them at the location. No, sorry, no. Non-congregate shelter, sheltering in hotels, which is what we've, our model, so...
Councilmember Oberon?
So the one question I had, there was a lot of, um, what do I want to call it? Rules and regulations that were tied to the coronavirus monies. So is that still the issue here with this, you think?
Obviously, we don't have a bricks and mortar shelter, so we have been housing folks in non-congregate shelter, which is, you know, their own individual motel rooms, so that works to help address... That, the reason that that even started happening and being funded is because of the pandemic. So it's a, it's a good model to continue to...
Just gonna continue essentially that program?
Yes, yeah.
Going forward with additional funding that is now available?
Yep, yep.
Any other discussion?
Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sealy?
Thank your honor, I have a resolution authorizing execution of a termination agreement by and between the City of Clinton, Spyber America LLC, terminating and the amended agreement for private development by and between the City of Clinton and Spyber America LLC. I move this to be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So what is happening?
They're done, then.
Yep, so basically, they're gonna take a pause right now. They have, um, quite a few million dollars of equipment that's in South Clinton, and they're, uh, they have several plants that they're in operations overseas, and they're actually activating into fundraising and raising dollars. And when they get back to there, then they'll come back. They've also canceled their contract currently with ADM to then reset. But the plan, Daniel Myers and I talked to him, said the plan is this continue, but right now they needed to kind of take a step back, reorganize, consolidate, and then move forward.
All right. Any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Councilmember Dederman?
Thank your honor, third consideration and adoption.
Please read the title.
Uh, ordinance, third consideration, an ordinance to amend sections ninety-seven point oh-two-six and ninety-seven point oh-two-eight and ninety-seven point oh-two-nine, and the, of the quotas ordinance of the City of Clinton, Iowa pertaining to sidewalks.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the ordinance? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman?
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution implementing the sidewalk repair program. I move it to be adopted as read.
Second.
Oh.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution implementing a sidewalk repair program. Any discussion? Councilmember Oberon?
Just real quick, this is part of our fiscal twenty-six budget. So when we get into that timeframe, we're, we're gonna just, you know, market it in a, you know, in a lighthouse or something like that.
I looked it over quick. Um, these, these funds, uh, the two hundred thousand dollars that...
General obligation bonds?
General obligation bonds. Um, they're first come, first served type deal.
Correct.
And is that mentioned in the ordinance?
Yeah, somewhere.
Yeah, basically, it's putting together the plan of where we're gonna be at, and then getting bids out. And then once those bids are done, that will cover all those properties. And so that's the only people that could be included at that point in time.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Kearns?
Um, page three, uh, under voluntary sidewalk replacement cost share program. It says sidewalks identified for repairs will be included in the city's repair program. Property owners must pay their share of the repair costs within a hundred and eighty days of completion of the sidewalk replacement. If payment is not received by this deadline, the city will replace, will place a lien on the property for the outstanding repair cost. I don't understand why we're giving them six months to pay for their part, and I don't think we need one more reason to put a lien on their property. I want them to pay their share to the concrete company alongside of us. I don't, I don't see why we have to bankroll somebody's sidewalk repair. I don't get it.
Jason Graff, city engineer? Yeah, I don't think we should have to bankroll anything as a city. I mean, everyone's adults, that they're agreeing to pay for their own sidewalk. I suppose that the city attorney can draft some sort of a mechanism to make that happen, whereby we wouldn't commence work on their particular project until we receive their share of the funds. That would be a legal question. I'm fine with it. I'm sure the city administrator is, but I, that's not the way I imagined it, but I was probably wrong.
Well, the assumption is that we vetted the first come, first serve individuals already. We've selected them for the program because they've expressed their interest, they want to do it. They're putting the money up front, as, as we are. So I, I think that we could probably avoid having to lien anybody's property in ninety-nine percent of the cases, because they've already committed it upfront, so as the work is commencing, we're paying the contractor, and so are they. If for some reason somebody didn't, I imagine we'd write a letter first and say, what, what's up? You know, the contractor's deploying, where's your money? And we would probably either stop work, or if for some reason the ball got dropped and the work got done and they never paid, then we would be after them for that. But I would hope we would avoid that ninety-nine percent of the time, right, Jason? I mean, we would...
We're gonna know the cost.
We'd be communicate, we'd know the cost, we'd be communicating as we're going, and presumably, they would write their check, and then, just as we did, and...
You could structure an agreement ba, based on that, those terms?
Because we're not going to them, remember, we're not going to them involuntarily, because they've already applied for the program.
Right. This makes more sense to me if we collect the money and the check balances, we're gonna lien your property. I get that, and they don't make it good, but just putting in, in here that they have six months to pay, I, I'm not good with that.
You're saying you, you, you would like the, the language to read, the city will require payment contemporaneous with the city's payment as the projects progress?
I mean, I, I had to do this in a, in a town that I lived in in Illinois, and, I mean, I went forward and, and fixed the property. They didn't have to come and tell me I had to do it, but, yeah, I didn't get to, I didn't get to sit back and not pay.
I always like to wait as long as possible.
Well, I know, Jason, I know, but not me.
You do it, Jason.
And we did, we have said precedent before, because as I mentioned, we, we did this in the facade grants. And so the facade grant folks actually paid ahead of time.
How does the roof program work?
In rears, they pay after.
They pay after? Like, how long after?
Tammy? Hopefully not that long. The roof program? Yeah, but they get a bill.
We send them a bill when we get the invoice from the contractor, it's before the work starts.
So how many people have not paid for their roof?
They've all paid, because the roof doesn't get done if it fails.
Oh, so they're paying before? So can this just be changed to upon completion of the job? It doesn't need to say you have a hundred and eighty days to pay.
I think, I think we just follow what the roof program does. If that's working and they're paying before the, the work gets completed, then...
It should, so what you're saying is, Mayor, you wanted to say, Councilmember Kearns, it should say that the bill for the work will be invoiced and paid before, before the work commences or something.
Well, I'm all right with that, too.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
We will know the exact cost.
We can just change that sentence.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll know far in advance, so, all right, sounds good. So we have to amend that? We gotta make a motion? Amend it to whatever Pat says we gotta amend it to.
Do you...
We'll just delete the sentence about the hundred and eighty days and say all, all invoices for the work under the program will be invoiced and paid before work commences.
Do we want to just move this to the next meeting? It's, this isn't a rush to get this completed?
No, because it's for next year.
Because it's, doesn't start till July one?
We can just amend it and put it on for next time.
Yeah.
So let's, let's, uh, let's get a motion to postpone until...
Till the next council meeting.
The next meeting.
May twenty-seventh?
Postpone until May twenty-seventh with, with the changes discussed?
Yes.
Okay. We have that motion? We have a second? All right, so we, uh, motion and a second to postpone this to May twenty-seventh with the changes that we just discussed. Any other discussion?
Just a little note, remember, the Go-Bond dollars will be, usually Anita will tell us, but like in September, they come available. So you still have a lot more time.
Okay.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sealy, A H.
Oh, this is a question for Jason. I was just trying to, Jason, for A H. at the, the change order for the seeding along the road, um, I understand you use the contractor that's working on the engine house, right?
Yeah.
Okay, but, so I was just confused, shouldn't, isn't this cost, shouldn't it be associated with the road? Uh, like, that project, not with this project?
Well, either way, it's out of the railpark fund, and the contractor that was on-site with the road project had a much more expensive...
So it's the same money, it's not, there wasn't a road that shouldn't have been paid out of that specific fund for the road?
Right, it's the same railpark fund, and this was a lot cheaper. And they were there and can get it done, and we were happy with the results.
So how much did it cost to do the fall and winter cute seeds that didn't grow and the summer seeds? Like, I guess, why don't you just, why don't you just seed it?
Oh, because by the time that road project was done, it was way too late for seed to germinate that would grow every year. So you had to just put like an annual seed in. That's a common practice.
I thought it was a good time to seed your yard in the fall, goes through winter, pops up in the spring.
It's the best time.
Yeah.
But it was like, it was literally like late, late fall, November, December.
To seed to germinate.
We needed something to grow quick, to provide cover, so we didn't lose all the soil due to erosion into the creek and being non-compliance with our DNR permit, so we had to spend like thirty-some thousand for temporary seed, which is not uncommon.
Oh, my goodness. That's crazy.
It's gonna, it happens on a lot of public projects.
That's unbelievable. All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
If it makes you feel any better, it's twenty thousand dollars on top of the trash, trash out of the landfills.
Oh, yeah.
And it grows good.
Can we, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Eight I. Councilmember Sealy?
Thank you, your honor. Did, did you folks look at this? Pop quiz, what's the rate increase? All right, so I pulled up last year's in...
No, no, no. What?
You pulled the wrong item.
Well, I didn't. AI.
Eight I.
Eight AI.
Eight AI.
What did you think I pulled?
Eight I.
Oh, no, no, no. What's eight I?
All right. I thought you were...
Oh, no.
Sorry.
Eight AI.
I heard you, I heard you incorrect.
Eight AI. So anyhow, I just wanted to point out that, you know, the premiums are, it looks like they're going up about six percent. Is that right, Anita or Matt?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Six, seven. Um, so I, I polled, you know, you can poll last year's, you can look.
Yeah.
So I think this, this just, we talked about this in budget session, and it's just, it's important that we get starting addressing this, because, you know, our, our revenues are not going up like this, and we have to have some contributions from the employees. We gotta make some modifications. The expected claims are up almost nine percent. The, the premium amounts are up about six percent. You know, and I don't think this is unique to Clinton by any means. This is just the world we live in at this point, but it, it's hard. It's gonna, it's, things are hard when you're, you're on a restricted budget, and we want to be prudent with taxpayer funds. So this is just my nudge again, that I really want us to work on figuring this out. And it's not Matt's fault, it's my fault, because I don't think I replied to his last email on it, so, um, yeah. So I'll take blame, but we, we do as a group need to work on this, and I think we've all...
Councilmember Shemmers? I'll add to that again. We just did the budget out of landfill. There was one of eight percent, so...
Eight percent, yep, yep.
Six percent, we got a smoking deal.
But in that email, as you know, we have four different courses of action. So we, we plan to spend some due diligence time this summer and early fall to take a hard look at those. And some are gentle, and some are not.
Correct, yep. And so it, it's kind of neat, you know, you guys just search the name of the resolution, and, you know, it's, you can go back and see all the years, and you can see how this just keeps going up and up and up and up and up, so... All right, so that's me being lame and doing that kind of research, so, yep. I'll make a motion to approve, um, this as well.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers. Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Oberon?
Yes.
Musman?
Yes.
Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Oberon?
Move we adjourn to five PM, May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
We are adjourned?
Oh, I lost it.